You're watching BCTV. We're all about Branford. You're watching BCTV, Branford Government Television, a service of Branford Community Television. This program is brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford.
Okay, welcome. We'll call the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 17, 2024 to order. Item one, to consider and if appropriate, approve the Board of Selectmen minutes of December 6, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved seconded. Any corrections, omissions, or errors? Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention if item passes. Item two will not be taken. There's no tax appeals discussed tonight. We'll go to item three. Can I get a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of stipulation for judgment in the Freed-Stoney Creek LLC versus Town of Branford Tax Appeal?
So moved. Second.
And we will also, it's been moved seconded by Attorney Cortella into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, to hear a report from Brian Devlin, Superintendent Waste Water Treatment Facility, concerning emergency work that was necessary to repair the Pine Orchard Pump Station.
Good evening. Yes, I had an issue at Pine Orchard Pump Station. I had a single-phase application. I lost the two pumps. The spare pumps that I use are 14 years old, so I got prices for the pumps. And when the manufacturer gave me the price, he gave me a price for 14.7 horsepower, but they needed to be 25. He honored the price, so he's giving me 25 horsepower pumps for the price of $26,935. They're probably close to 40. So they should be in in about two, three weeks. Because right now, the ones I have, they do clog up on us. These are non-clog, and we've been having good luck with the non-clogging pumps. So I've been sticking with the ABS pumps and the Homa pumps. They seem to be working well. So that was the reason why I had an emergency.
Okay. Any discussions regarding this?
No.
Yep, all right. Can I motion to?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, we'll just accept the report. All right, move seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item six, to consider if appropriate approval request from Brian Devlin, Superintendent Waste Water Treatment Facility, to waive the bid for the purchase of the town, 10-horsepower non-clog Homa submersible pumps, and award the contract to Mechanical Solutions Inc. in the amount of $12,898.
Oh yeah, this is the Block Island Blocks Pump Station. I had issues with the two pumps due to rags, rocks, and the breeze, so we had spare pumps. Again, they were 14 years old, and right now I'm getting issues. So I'm going to change them out to non-clogging pumps. I have it in the budget to, I could afford them, so I wanted to put them in. And that's why we had issues a couple of weeks ago at the station. I'd lost two of the pumps, and I had two available. Now these two I have now that are in the spares. I have no spare ones. That's why I need them.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Move seconded. Just for the note, this is less than $400 above the bid threshold. So that's what Brian's here before.
Yes.
All right, so it's been moved seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item seven, to consider if appropriate approval request from Parks and Open Space Authority to waive the bid for the rehabilitation improvement of two parking areas located at two separate trailheads on Red Hill Road, and award the contract to J.G. Boyd &amp; Sons in the amount of $14,495. The Chairman of the Parks and Open Space Authority, Rich Shanahan, unfortunately was unable to attend tonight. He did, I did meet with him. He did provide the board with a letter, which is in the packet, the map of the location. These are, as stated, two separate trailheads, two separate projects. However, when issuing, when looking to put in a purchase order, we felt it was just better to come through this process, because although two separate projects combined and that they're both off of Red Hill Road, it does exceed, as I mentioned before, that $12,500 bid threshold. Any discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. Yeah, I would go to the board first. Please step up to the microphone.
Good afternoon. I'm Daniel Halli. I live on Red Hill Road. Could you tell me where, there are three trailheads on Red Hill Road, so which of the two are being renovated? There's one at the very end of the road.
There's one that he refers to as the Van Wee Parking Area. And then there's.
Is the vertu as what?
Van Wee Parking Area. Looks to be toward the end of Red Hill Road. And then there's another one they refer to as the Red Hill Road Parking Area. So he references just the two that are along the map I can provide you.
Do you want to see this, Dan?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, can I see that, please? Thank you.
I will mention that he, so just to be clear, when he referenced the expanded rehab, the Van Wee Pond Parking Areas, he refers to an east and west, east lot and a west lot.
Well, it, okay, so the.
So there are three.
There's actually four, then.
Okay.
I didn't know they were counting where the Van Wee Pond is, because that, to me, I thought was, I thought that was land trust property. Evidently not. But then there's two trailheads further up, as you can see. You can see those, the two figures that are drawn in there, the icons representing trailheads further up. And they are, both of those are in need of some type of work, because they're all just stone, gravel, mud, and whatnot. If you go in there now, you would see that those are, you know, in quite a little bit of disrepair. Now, those are the ones that have the gates in front of them. So, you know, and I walk those common, you know, most days I walk those that it's, you know, walkable. And they need, they need some work. Now, that's not in this, this plan then, right?
It's the two, the three areas that I mentioned.
Two areas.
Yeah, well, I just said east, he references an east and west lot of the Van Wee and then the Red Hill Road lot. So he references three areas initially, letters two.
So are we doing two or three?
I.
I'm just, I'm confused, that's all.
Okay, so you mentioned that in his letter, he references, or in the agendas, references two, two lots, two separate lots.
Okay.
And I explained to you in the information provided by the Chairman of the Parks and Open Space Commission.
Yeah.
And you're more than welcome to attend the Parks and Open Space Commission and express your concern, since you live there.
Yeah, I suppose I am. You know, if I, if.
Excuse me. Let me just answer the question.
I thought we were having a discussion.
Yeah, but in order, you have to listen to what I'm saying.
Okay.
So in reading what the purchase requisitions, he references the Red Hill Road Parking Area, so I assume that's one area. And then he references the Van Wee Pond Parking Area, and he references an east lot and a west lot. So two separate areas. However, the way the description is in his requisition, it sounds to me, right, west lot, east lot, and the Red Hill Road lot. So three lots in two separate locations.
So, so if I knew this was on the agenda today, I could have had a little bit of time to look this up, but, you know, I saw the agenda on, was posted sometime yesterday afternoon. That gives me very little time to look at this, right, and to, and to research it. Is there a possibility that the, that some of these agendas could be posted earlier, so it would give a common citizen like me a chance to investigate this a little bit? It seems like it's a very tight, all right, I mean, it's one day, that's one day, less than one day, a little over one day, I have to look this up. And, you know, if I happen to be busy that day, or didn't look at the agenda when it first comes on, it seems to be an issue. And I'm guessing I'm not the only one that has that issue.
So we rely, when the information comes up, we meet all the posting requirements, as far as, you know, it's 24 hours, or believe you should, 24 hours prior to a meeting, which we do. This, this, this work, and these efforts to improve the parking areas, has been ongoing, actually spanning several years. This was a undertaking by the Parks and Open Space Authority. For the last several budget cycles and years, they, they've been requesting funds to improve trailheads and parking areas.
Right.
So I think there was ample opportunity for the public to be aware. If you have a concern with these specific ask, or is your concern for, that you feel that there's other areas on this particular trail or road that should be addressed?
Yeah, to answer your question, yeah, I think there's, there might be other areas that seem to be addressed. And even in your explanation of it, it seems to be a little bit convoluted as to, you know, what, is it three parcels? Is it two parcels, with one parcel split in half? I mean, so, and evidently, you must have attended these parks and record open space meetings, so you know all about this. But if I didn't have any opportunity to attend these, then, and, you know, I can't be at all meetings at all the time. I mean, that's just the way it is, right? How many commissions do you have? 100? 100 boards and commissions or thereabouts in the town?
None.
So it's not reasonable to, okay, 50? So it's not reasonable for me to expect one citizen to be attending all those meetings and be on top of everything. That's how come we have elected officials full on, right? And you're one of those elected officials. So I'm just asking, I mean, I'm not complaining about it, I just want to get a better feel for it. And, and I think that there's, there could be a need for a little bit more work here, that's all.
Okay, any other comments? All right. I don't think there's any other comments. There's been a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. Item passes. Item eight, appointments, Danielle Cosgrove Animal Shelter, Bernice McKay, to fill a vacancy left by Stephanie Malkin, term to expire September 30, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. RTM, Guyano Schresta, to fill a vacancy left by Ram Schresta, term to expire November 18, 2025. This is for the fourth district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Board of Fire Commissioners, Robert Massey Jr., David La Croix, terms to expire January 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. East Shore District Health Department, Darlene Zimmerman, term to expire February 28, 2026. Elaine Anderson, term to expire February 28, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Human Services Board, Mary Perry, Lexie Klarman, Elizabeth Saddleberger. Mary Grandy, terms to expire December 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
May 26, what did I say?
2026.
Oh, what, I'm sorry. December 31, 2026. All in favor, it's been moved seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Parker Memorial Park Commission, Edward Masada, term to expire December 31, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reappointments, Board of Police Commissioners, Patricia Austin and Janice Hagy Margolis, terms to expire January 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Reappointments, Board of Police Commissioners, Patricia Austin and Janice Hagy Margolis, terms to expire January 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Board of Fire Commissioners, Robert Massey Jr., David La Croix, terms to expire January 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. East Shore District Health Department, Darlene Zimmerman, term to expire February 28, 2026. Elaine Anderson, term to expire February 28, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Human Services Board, Mary Perry, Lexie Klarman, Elizabeth Saddleberger. Mary Grandy, terms to expire December 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
May 26, what did I say?
2026.
Oh, what, I'm sorry. December 31, 2026. All in favor, it's been moved seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Parker Memorial Park Commission, Edward Masada, term to expire December 31, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Joseph Chadwick, term to expire October 31, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Zoning Board of Appeals, alternate, Richard Falsignow, term to expire October 31, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Green use, to consider and if appropriate, approve a request from the Branford Counseling and Community Services for the use of the town green on June 1, 2024. Rain date, June 2, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to hold an education event and various activities.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. To consider if appropriate, approve the request for MADD for the use of the town green on April 6, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. to hold a mini golf and youth day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. To consider and if appropriate, approve a request for MADD for the use of the town green on October 5, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon to hold Walk Like MADD.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item passes. Item 11, correspondence, who received a letter from the Board of Recreation dated January 10, 2024. This is stating the Recreation Board's support of the WIS Athletic Field Upgrades. It is in the packet for anybody that may be interested. This will also, has been, we were copied on it. This will be sent, is sent to the Board of Finance by the Board of Recreation. And will be, that item will be under consideration at their Board of Finances. We expect it to be under consideration at the January meeting. Item 12, any other business? Any other business? Yes.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, come on up.
Yeah, my name is Carl Dawson, speaking. I have a couple of issues that I like to tell the Board of Selectmen about. One is, I'm not sure if you know that every time we have a rainstorm or high tide, it's flooding in front of the Waverly Park Bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm speaking, I lived at Waverly Park for 41 years. I'm a resident of Branford all my life. I devote everything to Branford. I support the Board of Finance, the RTM, the Board of Selectmen, all the departments in the town. But every time, it floods. So I don't know if they have, somebody said a resilient, resilient fund?
Yeah.
Or something to fix this problem? It's a town road. I just want to make sure the Board of Selectmen know that it's flooding all the time. Now it's icing all the time, because it's winter time, it's cold, it's all saltwater, it's, it's one way in, one way out. It's ruining our cars, you know, and all the saltwater gets on our cars. And I just want to make sure that, that.
Yes.
James Jamie Cosgrove, Ray, Ray Dunbar, and Angela Hengens know about this problem, and I hope it can be corrected, because it's on Civil Creek. And I was thinking, once the Civil Creek Bridge was completed, that the tide gates or whatever were going to be fixed, and this problem would go away. But it's, it's worse than ever now. So I just want to make you aware of it, and I don't know who corrects it or fixes it. Is it the Public Works, or the Town of Branford, the State of Connecticut? Who's responsible to get this fixed?
Well, certainly, there, I think there's a many, it is going to be a complicated project in terms of addressing it. A lot of it has to be.
Do you know about it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's one of the reasons why.
I very rarely come to these meetings, but.
No, I mean, the, the town is aware of it, myself included. It has been identified, that area, in our Hazard Mitigation Plan, going back to 2016, 2019, I think they even referenced that area in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Various plans that the town has commissioned over the years have identified that area. And a couple of years ago, we were trying to move forward with beginning to acquire some of those parcels immediately below the coastal jurisdiction line. That would provide some area where we can essentially not only establish some open space between where it's growing, but more importantly, then we could probably look at raising that road and some other measures. Unfortunately, that effort did not receive support. However, we continue to look at measures. I know there's a, there is an ad hoc commission, a committee that looks at coastal vulnerability, it's Coastal Vulnerability Working Group. They have identified a number of roads throughout town that, again, have similar issues of what you described here.
I know the neighbors are quite upset about it.
Yeah.
So I'm represented in my, my neighborhood where I live.
Certainly, yeah, no, I understand.
I mean, it doesn't affect any of you people. It affects people on Waverly Park that have to go over that bridge, and there's no, no exit. That's another subject. I won't get into that, but you probably know about it.
I certainly, I'm fully aware of the issues.
There's one way in, one way out.
Right.
And if it floods, how are we going to get out?
Yeah.
Do we have to have the police fire, ambulance, any emergency people come? They won't be able to get to us. That's another issue.
Yeah, we know, we know it's an issue, and it's been discussed. And as I said, a few years ago, a couple of years ago, we, you know, tried to acquire one parcel of property there, and we thought that would be the, essentially, the first of making people aware of some, some programs that are available to kind of address where they may be directly impacted. But in doing that, part of the greater plan would be able to then implement some true resiliency measures. So as you said, that road is so low there, it floods.
So you say building up the road will solve the problem?
It's potentially, again.
When is that going to happen?
These are things that have to be studied, and there's very little right away. That's what I'm saying. It's, it's more than just one parcel, and there's more than just one contributing factor. You have tidal influence, which, once again, yes, that's a state. Tide gate, which we know that the project was just completed, but.
Was that tide gate fixed, though?
Yes, it was a new tide gate installed and fixed.
Okay.
But again, you have to look at the levels, the level of what that can be set at. And this is really under the direction of the State of Connecticut. It's not a local decision. It's a State of Connecticut decision, as they oversee that tide gate, as well as the estuary that's upstream from that. The, the, the infrastructure itself, certainly, that's local, you know, the road going in there.
It's local. That's why I'm coming to you.
Right.
The local road, yeah.
Yeah, no, it needs to be addressed.
Right.
Right. And it's a very low area. And with sea level rise, increased storm events, the other thing that takes a lot of water, you know, shed area, it's a pretty significant watershed area. So during these extreme storm events that we've been having, rain events.
I understand.
It's all going down into that, essentially, that, that stream, that creek.
Right.
And which is then restricted by how it can flow out, the tidies.
So what's the, what's the plan to get it fixed? Is it up to the state? It's up to the town?
Again, it's, it's, there are a lot of priorities throughout town, Carl.
Oh, I'm sure.
And I know this is a priority, as you mentioned.
No, I live there.
You live there, right? And we have.
Had to deal with it every day.
Right, right. And we have a number of issues throughout areas, and the town is looking at it. And we have taken the proactive approach. You referenced the Coastal Resiliency Fund, which, you know, Town of Branford was the first, not only in the state, but arguably probably the country, to establish such a fund, so we can actually, you know, start to have some funds, not only today, but put away funds, but also in the future, to leverage other opportunities to address. These, these issues are only going to intensify in the coming decades, and we need to be prepared financially to start addressing them.
But you have money in that fund, correct?
Yes, we do.
How much do you have?
Um, I believe it's.
Over a million?
What's that?
Over a million dollars?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I listened to all the meetings.
Yeah. No, it's over that. Yeah, we first funded it with a million.
Right.
And we put about, a little over 300,000 per year into that fund.
So you're, so you're saying you're working on this project, then?
Yes.
We don't have any timeframe, do we?
No.
No.
But I'll certainly, you know, talk to the town engineer tomorrow and let them know, which, they're fully aware of the issues that are happening around town.
I'm sure there's other areas too they're probably working on.
Yep.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Then I have another question for you. So I get my tax bill in the mail for, for two, two different, two different times, one in July, one in January. So I have my, my January tax bill here. So then again, in December, I get another tax bill for January. So that's, that's more postage the town has to pay out. Now, I already have my bill for January, which I'm going to pay. Not a problem. But I'm wondering why they send me another one? Now they have to pay more postage? The town has that much money, so they could pay more postage to send me another bill? What's, what's, I don't understand. Maybe I'm stupid. I didn't go to college, but I graduated high school in Bradford High. You know, Ray and I went high school together, and he knows me. But I just have a question. Why do they have to spend more postage, when I already have the bill? Doesn't make sense to me at all.
Okay, so, you know, as.
Go ahead, I'll let you speak. I'll let you speak now.
Yeah, because I had a, you know, you and I had a conversation about this outside the.
Yeah, we did.
The community center.
I really didn't get a good enough answer.
Well, as I explained to you then, and again, I've heard from other residents as well, so it's not just.
But the people that only get them, probably the people that own their houses.
No.
Is that correct?
No.
No?
No.
The people that have mortgages, they probably won't get it, will they?
Yeah. Carl, I'm going to, so the town, as you correctly stated, historically has generated a bill that has the two payments.
Yes. Yes.
The July one and the January one payment.
Yes.
One bill. That usually goes out the end of June.
Right.
Right? Historically, the town has done that. The last couple of years, the, the tax collector has.
Oh, he did it on his own?
So the tax collector has, you know, looking at where there were some, you know, in the past, some delinquencies were often occurring at the second bill, lost bills, or just.
Well, they lose it, they can go to town and get another one?
Carl, I'm going to answer.
Okay, go ahead.
The same answers, but you brought a question here in public. We discussed this, you and I, and now you brought it in public, so I, I think it's also important for the public to hear.
Okay, go ahead.
The explanation. So the, the tax collector felt perhaps generating a, a second bill, I mean, it's the, it's the same bill that went out in June.
Right.
Because he felt perhaps to test to see if that increases or improves the collection come January, so people aren't, you know, forgetting about it.
Delinquent.
They're not, they're losing a month where then the interest occurs.
Right.
Things like it. So he first wanted to test for this, I think, two years to see if there is an improvement in that collection for that second payment. Because oftentimes, as I said, people either forget, misplace, you know, and, and again, I know you don't.
I don't replace anything.
You called me.
I've been listening to you all my life.
This is the third time I've talked to you.
I was a member of the Branford Fire Department for 12 years.
So.
I dedicated my life to this town.
I'm explaining to you why.
And I'm upset about it.
I'm explaining why, so, after our conversation that we had, where we discussed this issue.
Right.
I, and I've, like I said, I've heard some concerns from other residents as well. I did have a conversation regarding and shared the concerns that you just stated, right? Perhaps i- is the cost worth it? So, you know, one of the things that the tax collector said perhaps, and, you know, I asked, is there a measurable improvement? And one of the things he's going to look at in terms of for next year, is rather than generating a, a second bill, where they're actually going through it, but, but perhaps just, you know, do a reminder, either through a postcard or some other, other means to do, to just to remind people that they have.
Put it in the sound.
Exactly. He's going to look at multiple, so I did share your concern, which again, was voiced by others as well, and.
Well, I'm not the only one.
No, no, others have stated, and the tax collector, moving forward, is going to look at some other avenues as well. But he does think it is important that people do have, you know, we do, the, the town does a robust effort in terms of reminding people that a second payment is due, because that's typically where he sees the fall off.
Okay.
All right?
All right. But I hope we get the other problems straightened out.
Yeah, it's going to be, that's a longer term probably, that, you know.
No idea.
It's more complicated than.
More complicated.
Said it, you know.
Well, we have that fund to work with, right?
Right. I mean, we're, we're fortunate, we're, we have, you know, we, we are looking at these, we have resources, we're in, you know, strong financial standing, but again, it is very broad issue across town. It's not limited to one street.
Oh, I know that. I'm sure. Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
All right, anytime. All right, any other business? Mr. Hallie and Ms. Representative, just trying to stay, stay in the order as I see the hands come up.
Are you currently, currently receiving a salary from the town? Are you taking a salary from the town?
Yes.
Okay. And can you tell me what that amount is?
It's roughly 105,000.
Okay. You think that as a employee of the town who is spending, who's, who is receiving a, a fair compensation for the, the work you do, that we could move these meetings to a time that is more favorable to the public and maybe less favorable to your schedule? And maybe move this to, say, a six o'clock meeting, which I think would make it a, a meeting that would be more accessible for the people who are working? There's a lot of working people who cannot attend this meeting because of, you know, they have obligations at work. And I think, and maybe you, I, I, I hope you agree that more public input only helps you do your job better. Would you consider that?
So we did. As you know, I'm currently in my sixth term.
Yeah.
So prior to this change, we've done, you know, 10 years, and a number of the first four terms, eight years, we were at 6:00 PM meetings. And I can tell you that the public that is here today at this 4:30 meeting is far greater, far greater than probably the overwhelming majority. I can't think of a meeting when we had six o'clock. I'm answering your question.
Yep.
So as far as improved public participation, we always welcome public participation. As I've always said to people, it's not just limited to a meeting. You know, my office is always open. My, I think, myself and the other selectmen will certainly make themselves available to speak to any resident when needed, if there's any issues that needed to be addressed. So I think history has shown, and, and, and I will also say, I mean, the town, if we were to go back to previous administrations, you know, there has been times that it's been four o'clock, 4:30, as we, we move back to now. So there has been times when this was the regular schedule. We decided to, because as I said, as far as the public actually attending these meetings, you know, eight to 10 years, 10 years prior, very little public presence. The, however, the, the majority of the times where we have a meeting was really with its town staff that's here, to come and present their items. It's, it's, and for here. So, you know, when we made a decision, we adopted the calendar 4:30. If, listen, if there's an issue, or there's a, if we feel that the public is not being heard, you know, we can reconsider, but we adopted, as you know, last month or in December, the schedule for the 4:30. And again, that was really, the change was, was because there wasn't, there was not historically public participation in any area.
So, so your answer is no?
No, you asked if I would consider it. And I, I said I consider, and I don't need to consider it, I lived it for 10 years.
So you're saying.
And there's no, so we have greater.
So you're not inclined to do this?
We have.
You're not inclined to change it to six o'clock?
At this point, no, I don't, I don't see.
Okay. So the reason there might be so many people here is the last time you had a meeting was a month and a half ago.
Mm-hmm.
We pay you for what? We, we have two meetings supposedly for Board of Ed every, a month. And it's very sporadic that you actually show up for both meetings.
For the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
We, we.
Board of Selectmen has, has, has routinely, in the last six or eight years, six years anyway, I've gone back as far, and it, and it meets on an average of 18 times a year, which is every month, you know, one and a half times.
Yeah, I'm aware of this guy.
So, so you hardly, you barely meet in the summertime. If you meet, it's one, it's once a month, it's not twice a month. So, you know, part of this thing is, is I think the access to the town public is, is all well and good if I can call, if I can meet you in your office, except if I'm working, I'm not meeting you in your office, because you're working the same time I am. So even though you think that's, that, that's a viable thing to do for the working people who are, or are trying to make a buck and trying to make ends meet, that's not a, that's not a, a solution. Secondly, yeah, you want to respond to that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, there have been many times, and this is really not for your benefit, because I certainly understand why you're here and bringing this issue, but really for the public. As I said, my, my door, and I'm always make myself available, and I know the other selectmen have met with members of the public, but to, you, you characterize that I'm only available during normal business hours. I have not only, you know, had phone call conversations, I give my town cellphone to people who need to get in touch with me. I have met with people after hours at Town Hall. I have even gone on weeknights and weekdays, as well as weekends, to meet with residents, not only at Town Hall, but also if there's a neighborhood issue, in their homes and their neighborhoods, to address issues. So if, if, if the public, if members, residents of our community have an issue that they'd like to have addressed or need to speak with myself or the, the selectmen, we make ourselves available. I certainly know I have a 10, over 10 years of making myself available, and I will continue to do that for those that, that need, have some concerns that they would like to have discussed, addressed, considered.
Okay, a, a second issue. I, I understand that Peter Black, a member of the RTM, has been appointed as the Deputy Registrar for the Republicans at the Registrar of Voters' Office. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah. Deputy, yep.
And the Republicans have learned nothing from the fiasco in September with the Don Conklin not being able to run a primary because of a conflict of interest, and yet you're going to set up that same situation with another member of the RTM? And so is, can you guarantee me that Peter Black will not run for, say, the 102nd District seat and primary, say, your chairman? Can you guarantee me that? No, of course not. So the point of the matter, the point of the matter is, is once again, either, either it, to me, it's either stupidity or arrogance, because it seems to me that you've gone down this road before and you've learned nothing from it. And it, and I say you as a party, and of course, you're, you are seen as the figurehead of the party, so I'm addressing this to you. I, I did try to address this issue to the, the party chair, and he said at the last meeting we were at, that I was a non-entity and he would not speak to me, which is really, okay, so I'm speaking to you about this. Do you see that that might be a problem?
Um, you asked if I can guarantee if somebody decides to put their name forward and, that they will not put their name forward to run for elected office? No, nor should I guarantee somebody doesn't put their name forward. Everybody who's a.
Correct.
Elector in the Town of Branford has a right to put their name forward to, to, to serve their community if they'd like to. So I'm not going to guarantee it. I think if there's an issue or down the road, I think the, the registrars, the appropriate bodies, the Registrar of Voters and/or the, the party will address that at the appropriate time. To speculate, to speculate, or to have some discussion on a hypothetical that may occur is, I think, really fruitless, and I don't see is the, the purview of this body.
Well, however, 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 the, the situation has occurred. It occurred only last September, where a member who was on the RTM and is a member, is, was involved in a primary and indeed could not run that primary, and in fact, the Republican Registrar could not run that primary, and in fact, it was, it, a Republican primary was run by a Democrat. And you can't guarantee that that won't happen again, just like you can't guarantee, which you shouldn't. You shouldn't guarantee that somebody's not going to run for office. So what I'm saying to you is that, that possibility still exists. Why would you put yourself in the town in that compromising position a second time when you don't have to? There's, there's 28,000 people in the Town of Branford. There's about 3,700 Republicans. You can't find another Republican to, to fill that position or to ask Mr. Black to, you know, resign from the RTM? Now, I know you're saying this is not part of the, of the Board of Selectmen. I tried to go through your party chair, and I, I had no, no luck with it, so I don't know who to go to. I can't talk to your, to the present Registrar of Voters for the Republicans, because he hasn't been in the office in over a year.
All right.
I, I, I mean, it's, it's just the reality here. It's frustrating, because you can, you can see how there's a possibility that this election is going to be another boondoggle that we don't really need, right? And I'm, I'm worried about the integrity of the election. It's a Democratic thing, I guess. I don't know.
I think the Registrar of Voters will conduct the.
Which one? Which one? The one that hasn't been in the office in over a year?
Yeah.
I mean, come on!
Well.
How is he going to address it? He hasn't talked to, he doesn't even talk to his own people. He doesn't talk to his own people. You ask, take a survey of the people that work in the Registrar of Voters' Office, ask, ask the people who are their assistant registrars in that office, when's the last time the current Registrar of Voters in the Town of Branford, who by the way is paying, is being paid a salary, and he's been paid a salary for over a year and he hasn't been in the office over a year? There's something wrong with that picture. And he doesn't communicate with his own staff. Now, you may not, you may not like that, and you may think I'm just a pain in the neck, and yeah, you know what? I am a pain in the neck, because I, I think voting integrity is very important, and especially in this year, when the presidential election is coming up, and there's going to be at least two primaries and a presidential election with early voting, and we only have half the staff or half the leadership we need to run that.
Yeah, certainly not half the staff, the.
No, half the leadership. Half the leadership, I corrected.
And, and again, we have, we have.
And, and do you know when, do you know when that Registrar will be back in the office?
Uh.
No, nobody does.
Yeah, but, but we have, we have people there who are assuming.
Who, Peter Black? He's been there for two weeks.
And, and Don Conklin's still there.
Yeah, but he's, he's, he's leaving at the end of the month. He has said that numerous times.
No, he's, he's, no, he's not. He's staying until, he's staying until the Registrar returns.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
And, and do you know when that is?
I just answered that.
No. So, once again, we are still paying for somebody to do it that, that is not doing the job. Would you be able to do that? Well, maybe you are already. Thank you.
Hey, should have quit. Any other business? Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Everson.
Thank you. I would just like to echo, Tracy Everson, 23 Mill Creek Road, I would just like to echo the request to change the time. I realize that public participation in person may not be here in the room. I think it's important for the public to have that opportunity. The RTM meets at 8:00 at night, the Board of Finance meets at 7:30. The Board of Selectmen is an important part of town government. It was at 5:00, which would give people who work maybe nine to five an opportunity to be here and address you. I realize I've been at these meetings, I know what the audience participation is like. However, I think it's also a, and part of good government to make it accessible with the time change back to the 5:00 or even 6:00. And I'd also like to echo what Dan Hallie mentioned about the, the timing of the agenda coming out. I realize it is 24 hours is what is required. The RTM is usually published 10 days out, or seven days out, so there's plenty of opportunity for people to review what's on that agenda and to participate if they'd like to. I would like to see the Board of Selectmen consider doing at least perhaps 48 hours to give residents enough time to actually see what's on the agenda, and there might be more people here in the audience to talk about it. Thank you.
All right, any other business? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the Town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.